And now we're also over the Go Bus.[1195.23-1201.33][S10] We took over the administration of Athens Public Transit in January, so we've been[1201.33-1204.12][S10] at that for a year.[1204.12-1209.83][S10] We had 298,000 riders in the city transit system this year.[1209.83-1213.12][S10] So that's quite a bit.[1213.12-1219.91][S10] There were 52,000 on Go Bus and as a result of our growth, we moved our offices from[1219.91-1224.41][S10] Gloucester down to Athens at 1015 East State Street.[1224.41-1230.41][S10] We just opened up in November, so if anybody's out on that end of town, we'd like for you[1230.41-1233.83][S10] to stop in.[1233.83-1238.58][S10] I'll take just a minute before I turn it over to Michael Lockman, who's our Athens[1238.58-1242.08][S10] Transit Manager.[1242.08-1246.41][S10] Recently, we just opened Athens On-Demand Transit.[1246.41-1251.33][S10] This is a grant-funded program that we got through the Developmental Disabilities Council[1251.33-1257.12][S10] of Ohio and the Osteopathic Heritage Foundation in Nelsonville.[1257.12-1260.00][S10] So we got the funding to start this.[1260.00-1264.73][S10] We have two vans right now, we have three new ones on order.[1264.73-1271.73][S10] Our goal is to provide transportation to persons with disabilities in Athens County. If we have space available, our next goal is to provide medical transportation to elderly and people with disabilities because medical issues are, you know, very critical. We'd love to be able to go to Columbus because that's the next step on this, is solving that problem. We operate six days a week, Monday through Saturday, eight in the morning till nine at night. We require pre-registration and basically all that is, is you call in and we get all your data, where you live and all that stuff, get it in our computer. You call in 24 hours in advance and ask for a ride. If you know your medical appointment, you know, a month ahead of time, you know, we suggest for medical appointments that you call in to make sure we have the service. Our number is 597-2404 and we've been at it about six weeks now and we had 311 riders the first month. So with two vans, that's about approaching our limit, but I have the three more coming. So I just wanted to take a minute to say that and now I'll turn it over to Michael, who's going to update you on Athens Transit. who's going to update you on Athens Transit.
Thanks, Lance.
Thank you. Thanks a lot, Lance. Well, as you said, I'm Michael Lockman. I'm the Transportation Services Manager for Athens Public Transit, and I've been at the job just over a year now. I started January 3rd of this past year. And prior to my taking that position, a lot of the grants management had been done through the mayor's office by Charlene in the midst of all of her many other different duties. And I still, I don't know how you pulled that off for so long. I'm in awe, but it's kept me busy. The first thing that happened when I walked into my office was that we had a major regulatory review from the state, and they hit us with some surprise findings. And so we spent a good part of the past year bringing ourselves into regulatory compliance. I think we're in a good place now, but it was an interesting start to the job. We've had a lot of staff turnover this year. Our longtime general manager in operations, Daryl Van Nest, retired this August, and our former dispatch unit administrative assistant, Mary Daly, has been promoted to general manager, and she's done a great job of that so far. She and I work very closely. We've also got a new mechanic. We've had some staff turnover in that position, and one driver retired and two new drivers hired. So some changes. A couple of things that I'm excited about right now, we just put in an order for a brand-new vehicle. We had a year where we didn't get a new vehicle. We generally have a replacement schedule of one a year, but because of two being bought with our funding a number of years back, we had to skip a year. But for 2013, we've got a brand-new one on order. It's got some new features, some new bells and whistles, and we're all very excited about it down at the garage. And in addition to that, a couple of other things that have happened. We've upgraded to, from cell phones to two-way radios for communications. Those are safer. They're mandated by the state. They don't like cellphone communications, so that's been a positive. And we've also just, this past week, put in a new vehicle exhaust ventilation system at the garage, which is an important step in terms of environmental health and safety. So hopefully our employees down there are going to be breathing a little less of things that are toxic to them, and that's definitely a plus. On the communications and media end of things, about three to four months ago, I redesigned our website, which is at www.athenstransit.org. And if you go there, we've got maps now that are zoomable. They're based on the Google Maps API, so you can go down to a very fine level of detail of where the bus route runs. We have a running news feed, so we can do service updates. Just the other day, I was able to put out some information about Carriage Hill being closed for a short amount of time with the snow. We've not had the capacity to do that on our website in the past, to get that sort of up-to-the-minute service information out. So that's exciting. We've had about a 15% growth in ridership this past year. That came as a bit of a surprise to me for as much groundwork as we've been laying, but there continues to be a very high demand in this area for bus service. And even more exciting, I'm happy to say that for this coming year, it looks like we're getting about a 50% increase in our level of state and federal funding, which in the current funding climate is a very big deal, I have to say. And again, not one that we'd necessarily expected. We'd hoped for it, but we really were waiting to see what ODOT would come back to us with. So that's a recap of 2012. We've got some big ideas for things that could happen in this coming year, in 2013, and I'm going to walk through those. Most of the changes that I'm describing, if they go forward, it would probably be sometime in late August to attempt to coincide with the start of the Ohio University semester, so to miss most of the construction of the Oxbow Bridge, which is going to be kind of an issue for transit service in terms of routing. So the number-one thing that we're working on is a rebranding of the system, a reimagining of its image. This is something that we've worked a little bit with local designer Kevin Morgan on. He's sent us some designs back and forth, but it's very much an open process at this point. If you have ideas of logo design, color scheme, name for the bus system or for individual services, please send them to us. You can send them to me. My email address is lockman@hapcap.org, or you can send them to Lance, or if you see us out around town, you can flag us down and hand us a slip of paper, whatever you want to do. So going on from changing the image, we're also looking at changing some of the structure and the routing of the system. And these are bigger, more structural changes. And one of the first that we've talked about, that we've explored, is the idea of actually moving our main bus stop, which is currently located across from City Hall, next to the parking garage, and taking that down to Mulberry Street, next to Baker Student Center. So this is the section of Mulberry that is behind Bentley Hall and Lindley Hall. Some of the ideas behind this, as we're looking to grow ridership and coordinate with other city-area transportation services, we noticed that this is a natural meeting point for a very high pedestrian flow. So you've got pedestrians in the tens of thousands that are passing through that area right there. The city owns a fairly wide right-of-way next to this particular sidewalk, so there's opportunity for infrastructure on city-owned land at that particular spot. The sidewalks are ADA compliant, which is an important thing, particularly when you're working with vehicles with wheelchair lifts and wheelchair access. This is the big one. All of the other local bus services in Athens stop and pass through this particular point. So the OU CAT shuttle, the private apartment complex shuttles that we have in town, and some of our airport shuttles and taxi cab services all congregate in that one particular spot. We have a bit of a problem right where we are on West Washington with connectivity with those other services. So there has been the issue raised of, if this move was made, how it would work with the fact that bus passes are currently made here at the mayor's office and utilities billing and elsewhere in the mayor's office. And the question has come up of how patrons with disabilities would navigate that if it was moved down, and that's really still an open question. I think it's going to be something that we're researching pretty intensively in the next month here, to try to get some opinions from our current ridership, people that work with some of them. And so I just want to raise that issue as something that's still in the air as part of this, as we're exploring it. Also with bus shelters, we have a grant right now, $50,000, to put a number of bus shelters around the city. And this is something that I've been working on for a while with Paul Logue, city planner. And we're by no means to the end of the tunnel yet. There's still a lot of potential sites that are flying around, but it's exciting to at least have that money, and we're working on some technical specifications and site designs that might potentially be useful across all the different sites that are under consideration. So along with this idea of putting up bus shelters, there's the question of how to really make our routing the most efficient. Right now, if you look at our bus map, and I apologize, I don't have an image of it here, but what it tends to do is circle around town on a very circuitous path. Sometimes in the industry, we refer to this as a milkrun route. We're trying to hit the most possible locations, but what you pay in terms of that is you have an extremely slow service, and often a very difficult service for patrons to figure out. They don't understand how this route connects point A to point B necessarily. So one of the things that we're looking at is streamlining our routing, with the idea being that Athens is very compact and walkable. That's one of our strengths as a town, I think. But we have certain spurs of the town that are not particularly walkable. So what we've tried to do is take the idea of Richland Avenue, which is one spur, going through Court Street, which is our central business district, and out to the East State Street shopping district, which is a long spur that is particularly difficult to get to because of the highway being there that cuts off a lot of the access, and having that be the access that a lot of our bus routing is done on. So we would take two routes that are currently in use, that cover parts of all of that, but not in a very direct way, and have them run directly Richland, Court, East State, and have them overlap. So you'd be covering with one route part of the far end of Richland Avenue, and with the other route, part of the far end of East State, all the way out to Holzer Clinic is where we currently terminate. But within that zone of high activity, you'd actually have an overlap where you'd put the bus on a half-an-hour frequency rather than an hour frequency. And what that would do is allow you to double your frequency, the number of buses in that high-traffic zone, without actually adding any miles or driver hours or cost to the system. Now, I say that, but what happens to the other areas that we cover in this very circuitous way right now? Do they lose access? So part of what we'd like to do with our increased federal and state funding is to add another small route, small vehicle, maybe even starting with a van, that covers the east valley side of Athens. It would go through the dormitory complexes, the apartment complexes on that east side, such as River Park Towers, Mill Street Village, and the Mill Street neighborhood and the near-east side of Athens. So that would be covering a lot of what's taken away from the current routing. But again, it would be much more direct and legible, if you're looking at it and thinking about it, than what we do now. Let's see. I have one final thing to throw out. We have a third route in town, and this covers the west side of Athens and goes all the way out to the Plains in a large loop. We go out Columbus Road and up Route 33 into the Plains, and then back via 682 and down Union Street. And the problem with this route right now is that we've run it on very limited hours. It only runs 10 to four weekdays right now, and one of our most common service requests is for expanded hours on that route. And so another thing that we'd like to try to do this year at some point is to take that routing and expand it by an hour or two on either end, to bring it more into line with our in-town route schedule, which is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I don't know at this point if we'll have the funding to do all the way 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on that Plains route, but even an hour on each end would really go a long way to opening up access for people on the Plains and the west side. So I know I've probably thrown a lot of ideas out here very quickly. We're going to be hopefully presenting more detail on this to city government in the coming month. And if these ideas really gain steam, our hope is that in March or April, we'd like to do some public hearings to get a wider public process involved in discussing them and moving them forward. So stay tuned for that. We'll definitely be in touch with council through this whole process, and I guess I'd like to open the floor to questions.
I do have a comment to add. Charlene has done a wonderful job in the past of coordinating the Athens Transit System. I think it was always well-run, well-coordinated, but it's, you know, Lance's Mobility Manager federal program, and now Michael coming on as a manager, has really made a huge difference in transportation within the city and within the county. So I'd like to thank you all for being part of a team, and I think it does show a coordinated effort. Michael, whether you, I'm not sure if you knew or not, but started coming to the Athens Transportation Advisory Committee meetings, what, easily a year or two before you became the Transit Manager and had done some of your graduate-level work on the mapping system of all the different routes of the different bus systems around the city. So he has worked with it a number of years, well beyond just the year you've been with us, so. I would be particularly interested, I know that when we had the Go Bus system and we were originally working with cash, that system has now evolved to doing more online purchase of tickets, so they have a better idea of ridership. They can anticipate the needs when they need eight buses on a, you know, Thanksgiving weekend, which has happened. And I'm wondering if we would have the capacity of considering, you know, online purchase of Athens Transit bus passes and making them available still at City Hall for those who are used to coming into the city proper and know the parking system here and know where they can get in, but then also kind of building on the online ease with which all the students purchase things.
And just to respond to what Chris was saying earlier, first of all, I think that that's an excellent idea to explore. Second of all, I'd like to say that I'd really be in remiss if I didn't point out the tremendous job that the mayor's office, the mayor, and Paula in particular have done with helping us to bring all these coordination players together. I know that Paula's done a ton of work with Ohio University on the memorandum of understanding, and there's a transportation component to that. I've also had some contact personally with OU student government and various university administrators, and I think that there's really a good-feeling town gown in the air around this particular issue at the moment, and that's very exciting.
I would like to make a comment. It just feels, you know, we always talk about the lack of public transportation, but hearing your comments tonight and what you guys have been able to accomplish, I mean, we're moving ahead. I mean, I think, you know, we have, I don't, maybe this isn't the word "state of the art", but we have a pretty nice system going on in our area, and that's, you know, due to a lot of you guys' efforts and all the work you've put behind it. But there's a lot of thought here. That's pretty evident.
Yeah, well, it's thanks to a lot of people, so.
Do we have a time limit on when we have to buy those shelters? I seem to recall that there was.
End of 2013.
Okay, so we have plenty of time to do that for the route changes. The bus you're going to purchase, is that going to be different size? Because we're talking, I know we had that conversation about, we have one size right now, if you want a more flexible fleet, you'd be looking.
It's the same size.
It is, okay.
It's a different layout, though. We made the change of taking the wheelchair lift, which has traditionally been at the rear of the bus, and the wheelchair position's at the rear. We decided that there were two things about that that we didn't like. One was that for wheelchair passengers, it's an extremely bumpy ride, because you're back behind the rear wheels of the vehicle, all the skew as you're going around turns, you get the most bounce. So we took that and we moved it up to the front of the vehicle, so you now have, in this new vehicle, the lift by the passenger door and the wheelchair position's just back of the driver. So hopefully that's going to be a little comfortable for, more comfortable for everybody involved. It also means that if we have high capacity, even though this is a small vehicle, your biggest area for standing passengers is going to be in the front of the vehicle. So the natural flow of a bus is people sit in seats, and then, as the bus fills up, if people have to, they stand. Well, with our old buses, if they were standing, they were standing at the back of the bus and then having to push past people. And if you've ever been on our buses, the aisle is not very wide. So the idea of this was also that if we have standing room only, it has a little bit of a more natural progression, that people get on, if they're standing, they're the first to get off, and that eases the congestion for everybody else.
Okay, and of course, bike racks will be part of the system as well. And you're talking about the express axes from Richland to East State, and with the neighborhood ones doing circles around them, would they overlap just at one point or several points, I guess is the question? I could see where you get an express bus that meets at Baker Center, but then they might, by timing, overlap somewhere in Home Street for the near-east side and the express. Is that a...
You're visualizing it very well, and yes, there is the possibility that they'll overlap at multiple points.
Okay.
Which makes connections between routes more easy. At the same time, it's difficult, I can tell you from an operations and technical perspective, of getting all those time points to line up.
I understand, okay. And I do hear a lot of requests for going to the Plains all greater length of time. A lot of people want to be able to work and work later, and I think that's where the on-demand is actually filling some of that gap as well.
Yeah.
From what I've been told.
Yeah.
So it's good that it's working together. Now, you also, we brought on Summit, I believe, right? You did that.
That's correct. I didn't mention that, but we are running the contract for the Summit at Coats Run Apartment Complex currently.
So it ceased to be an exclusive system to a public system.
Mm-hmm, correct.
More access as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
You got a question?
I just have a comment, and it's about the mobility service for persons with disabilities, which on the Commission on Disabilities, we've been hearing through those circles that how wonderful a system that is and how appreciated that system is, and that it's not that expensive either. I don't know if that was mentioned.
Two dollars one-way.
Two dollars one-way, to where I think you have some addicted riders who just love the service. And it makes sense, because it's anywhere within Athens, Athens County. So like I said, it's as simple as calling and reserving a spot on the van, and the van comes and picks them up, and if you have an appointment that takes, you know, a fair amount of time at the doctor's office, if schedule allows, the van will actually sit there and wait for the individual and/or go on a subsequent route and then come back and get them. So I, from a disability standpoint, I think it's a wonderful, wonderful system that this city has. It's invaluable.
I agree that on-demand fulfills a huge need in this area. I've barely heard a thing negative about it. I think people are thrilled, and it's really exciting.
I just want to know, how green is the fleet?
How, sorry?
Green? Environmentally sensitive?
Environmentally sensitive? We're using a mix of diesel and gas. We're not yet to the point where we seriously researched any alternative fuels. We'll have to see. That may be a project.
It seems like it'd be ideal, though, especially for small vans and things. I can't see, think of a good reason why they couldn't be like a hybrid. So it seems like something should be looked at.
Definitely.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention that there's always room for improvement, because as Lance said, we'll probably about have eight years of immobility where we won't be, well, somebody will take a driver's license and we'll have to get around otherwise. And that's what we have to plan for, so it works for everybody, regardless of whether they can drive or not, or whether they can walk down the street or not. And again, we do put a certain amount of money into it because it just doesn't break even, so, you know, it's a service that's required, I think, from my point of view, for a good city.
However, anybody in the city doesn't support that. I'm sure that we all do.
Yeah, thank you, Michael, for your summary of all the efforts that have been going on over the past year or two, longer, actually, I'm sure. I think with the people we have in positions now to oversee and manage our transportation in Athens city and county, I think we're coming a long way. So thank you for your work.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I have a question. I'm on the Good Works List serve, and maybe this isn't for you, but maybe for the city or for me personally, just to share this with others. The homeless shelter in Athens, one of their, they send out an email saying what they need. One of those things is often bus passes. And so personally, I think, I know that we're provided state and federal funding, so I'm not sure if we're allowed total flexibility and if we can allow certain riders to ride for free if they're homeless, for example.
That's a good question. I don't know the answer, but yeah.
I'd like to find out. That would be one thing we could do to help out a certain part of our population that has the most trouble getting from point A to point B.
Yeah.
And so I'll look into it, and maybe if you find an answer, let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you all. We're going to move on to our two committee agendas. First is Planning and Development Committee. Member Fall, you're the leader of that.
On the first order of business today is a revocable license at 63 North Court Street that's been requested. This is otherwise known as the former location of Blue Gator. I think most people probably recognize it as that and kind of get in people's mind. We do revocable licenses really quite a bit on planning development, probably at least once a month we have revocable licenses. Normally, they are for things like fences or signs that are placed on the city right-of-way. This particular one is a tiny bit different. It's for a revocable license for a balcony to go over. It's kind of like an air license, so there's no impediment on the sidewalk itself. It's for a balcony to go four feet, approximately four feet, over the sidewalk on North Court Street. We have applicants here tonight to answer any questions, so if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself and maybe briefly describe your project and...
Good evening. My name's Brian Wharton, and I apologize if I was supposed to have these to you earlier, but...
No, we have, actually, we have drawings.
I think, yeah, I think I have a little bit more.
You have colored drawings. Well, that's always good.
We liked colored pictures.
We liked colored pictures. Thank you. Oh, these are multicolored.
So obviously... It was brought to our attention as we were going through the restoration of the building. We've taken a lot of satisfaction, enjoyment of taking the property that obviously sat vacant for a number of years, three or four years. We have a commercial tenant that'll be moving in in July. It'll be a full-service restaurant, and they'll have a bar there as well. We have five apartments upstairs. They're, consist of two five bedrooms, two four bedrooms, and a two-bedroom. And, you know, we had, as all of you probably remember, there was the big blue, I guess, hence the name Blue Gator, that came off the building 11 feet. And we had always hoped to bring the building back to what it looked like in the late 70s, and I think there's a picture, there is a picture there on page two of the handout. That was taken from the, a page out of the Zarni Plan, I'm told, and the picture on the top was as it appeared in 1978. And the bottom picture there on that page is how the building was suggested to be rehabbed, if that date ever came. And obviously, we've added one, another story to the building. The top of the building had a facade that we've taken three feet off of the, three or four feet off of the top of the building, and added another story. The third story is set back approximately 20 feet, I think it's like 19 feet. And so the height from the front of the building has only changed six or seven feet from what it used to be eight or nine months ago. So the balcony on the top picture was, you know, how it used to be, and flipping back to the front, that's how we hoped it would appear when we're done with the project. It's four feet in width. We were, it was brought to our attention that a revocable license was needed to have a balcony, I guess, over 18 inches on both. So, you know, we think that it's a nice addition to historic Uptown Athens. We hope to, the picture has a green railing there, but we would like to have black wrought iron railing and have a Victorian look to the building. And then I think I've included some pictures of some other balconies in the area. And on the last page, as I know this is probably a subject that will come up, I have, we've done this with other places that we've rented, we manage or whatnot, Uptown that have balconies. We've added a lease addendum where we limit the number of tenants that can be on the balcony on certain weekends. I think here, at the top here on number two, and we haven't had the tenants that we have the building rented to sign this yet, because I guess we didn't know we were going to have a balcony, and we just kind of thought of it. But this was, this is our kind of standard thing, and number two has where the damage of the common areas are, unless someone's willing to own up to it, it's billed throughout the building when the common area can be locked. And this common area will have an intercom system in each apartment, and, you know, their guests will ring at the entrance, and then they can press the button, it automatically unlatches it and locks again when it closes. So I guess what I'm getting to is it gives the tenants a sense of responsibility in the building to live responsible, because they know that unless someone steps up and says, "I did that," or "my guest did that," everybody's paying for it the same. The third point there was the landlord will reserve the right to limit the number of people out on a sun porch. We have, we've used this above the Court Street Coffee, the old Barren's Men Shop. We use this addendum there. We use it above, or at Brony's there on the sun deck. And then we have, I thought, something that I would like to add for this particular property, because unlike those two instances where they're sort of set back and they're not actually balconies, no furniture allowed on this balcony at any time, because I personally just think it looks kind of trashy. And so, you know, it's one thing to go outside and enjoy it, or to be able to open, we have on the front there, we have some French doors on, and, you know, have them be able to open the doors and let the outside in, or vice versa. So I would, you know, we'll certainly put that in our lease addendum where there's no furniture allowed on there. And I work right across the street, going by it probably 90% of the days a year, and so I'll make sure that happens. I'm also very confident that the tenants that we have leased the apartments to will be, and I'm sure everyone would always say that they expect their tenants to be, but I'm extremely confident that the tenants that we have now and in the future will behave accordingly. Lastly, I think from safety, safety concerns from fire, I mean, I think that's what everybody always kind of is worried about. We have the whole building fire suppressed, which it wasn't, it is now. We use fire-rated drywall. The doors are fire-rated doors. The state fire marshal will have to put a stamp on the project before we get a state occupancy permit. And specifically speaking, on the balcony, you know, 18 inches, there's two things. One's it's sort of aesthetically, I think, you know, if you have 18 inches, it just sort of looks like a gate up to nice doors. And if you have, you know, four feet, it's usable. I think we're fortunate to be in a community where we can use the second and third story of our buildings downtown. I think, I'm sure some of you are familiar with Palmroy, and if you drive down Palmroy, I mean, there's beautiful old buildings along the riverfront there, and the only floor that's being used is the main floor. Some cases like that at the Nelsonville Square as well. But from a fire safety standpoint, with a wider balcony, the south, I guess that would be south, yes, the south end of this balcony is only, it's less than 12 feet off the ground. And if you have an 18-inch balcony, if you call it, I think from a fire safety standpoint, if you're choosing to exit the building that way, 18 inches can be a little constricting in trying to exit the front of the building. And four feet certainly allows more movability, and I know, it's like 11 feet, four inches, and I know, you know, 11 feet, four inches, and this is worst-case scenario, I mean, because the building is fire-suppressed and everything, but I know 11 feet, four inches isn't going to keep me, you know, from jumping off the balcony. And certainly, four feet gives you a lot more movability than 18 inches to do that. So with that, you know, in conclusion, we're just, we're happy that the project's coming to an end. We think it's a nice addition to Uptown. We appreciate the support that the city's given us so far in the project, and specifically the Board of Zoning Appeals, allowing us to have a variance on parking distance to do the project. And I guess I'm asking for your continued support to allow us to have four feet balcony. And I guess, any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I appreciate very much you coming in tonight, and I think I would also like to express my appreciation for your research into the historical Uptown plans. A lot of people don't do that, and I see all the other balconies. I think that the only time we recognized balconies was during homecoming, when a gazillion people are on them. But I think that it's very true that we have identified balconies as some, as a design element that could be used to, for aesthetic appeal uptown, and that's been identified in other, some of our other planning documents. I think that what, I will try to forestall some of the, some of the concerns that may come to council members by stating, I think that people will be concerned about noise. And we have heard that from other developments in that general area. And so I would suggest that maybe you look at some noise reduction design elements, meaning specifically, maybe on the, on the up...
The north.
The north end, a wall or a plant, a planter divide that would go up on the end, so that when there's people on the balcony late into the evening, that there's some kind of noise. And Brony's has done, when they put that, the covering over the outside area, that was a huge improvement, I think that. And I think that some of the pictures that you see on the other balconies, some of them are covered. I particularly like this one with the little, the little kind of train-looking roof on it.
I'll have to make a balcony.
And then the one with the, you know, office chair next to it, I think that's a contrast of good and bad design. Personally, I think that design makes a huge difference in how neighbors and every, and people interact, and I think that if we get any concerns from people in the city and the neighborhoods, it could be about noise. And so what I would suggest is just to look at some noise reducing, particularly maybe a trellis or a wall, and in putting in your lease requirements, noting specifically that they know the time limits for the noise ordinance. And you can't put noise ordinance times enough in leases. You know, we may have a lease agreement, but if you make them look at it again and sign special, then they know.
Yeah.
And so I think that it is an Uptown area, it's where the bars are, but also that we need to be just concerned about.
I can appreciate that. The only thing I would say to that, we have no issue looking into something there, but this is, I think with the number of people that are, I mean, it's still four feet is, I mean, if you come and look from, when you open the doors, I mean, it's like two steps out. And, I mean, there's not going to be any number of people on that balcony that wouldn't be maybe just on the streets. I mean, I'm sure they'll be able to create more noise from the sidewalks than, but I have no problem looking at, as long as, from an aesthetic view, like it's not like a permanent, like, concrete kind of...
Right. Oh, I would suggest...
I don't know what those look like, but definitely will look...
I mean, a lot of, I was looking at noise reduction for outdoor eating areas at one point. A lot of them, they say, you know, vine-covered trellises.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would look pretty, yeah.
Those sort of things, especially during, you know, spring and fall, those sort of things would work very well. I'm trying to forestall some of the issues that might come from the neighbors, because we have had these issues in the past.
Oh, yeah.
So I think that you have to, we do have to recognize that sometimes there are a lot of people out on these balconies, and sometimes it's a little scary. I mean, you say 50 people on your...
That is, that was...
For a different balcony?
Oh, yeah. No, this was, yeah.
So, because that's a lot of people.
No, that's, that...
So, I mean, there's a level of safety concern.
Oh, absolutely. That's actually not a balcony, that's a sort of a roof. Yeah, and it, and it's, funny enough, it's never used, I don't believe, but, is it some?
Yeah, very little.
Yeah, very little, yeah. It's weird. But, yeah, the square footage on that's probably 20 by 40, I bet you. But this, I mean, from a structural standpoint, this, you know, alls we did was cut off the beams, well, we haven't cut off the beams yet, we cut off the concrete from what was 11 feet back to four feet in hopes to keep the four feet, and then we will do the same with the beams. But those steel beams are almost 30 feet into the building. So if it was able to hold the, engineered to hold, you know...
Right.
We could probably have everybody shoulder to shoulder on there, and it would be fine. But, yeah, but anyhow, I guess...
Other questions from council? We'll go, we'll go down the line. How's that?
All right. I don't know how many people in here shopped at the old dime store in Athens, the Woolworth Building that sat empty for so many years. Thanks to university investment, we're finally seeing that being used. The Burger King Building that has been empty for many, many years is now, looks like it's getting prepared to be a kitchen and a restaurant. So it's really good to see yet another building that we've seen empty for quite some time be invested in, and so I appreciate that. I think it looks like a very tasteful design. As you point out with the pictures, there are many other porches of some design, some variety in the neighborhood, and so I don't think it's unique in the fact that it's a porch. I support it, I think. You're doing very good work with the building there, and...
Appreciate it.
So I will support council's action on this.
Just a question with a little bit of background, as it came through the Planning Commission, is that...
It came to the Planning Commission after going through the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the Board of Zoning Appeals, my understanding is that the balcony was conceptually presented and then requested to be removed. Is that...
I think the Board of Zoning Appeals, I think there's some, that did come up, but I think there's some question as to whether that was kind of their avenue on, you know, as far as what the balcony should or should not be. And, but, yeah, they did want us to remove what was there.
And I think from there, Brian came to meet with me, and I explained that this was, indeed, would have to go to city council, because that's your right of way, and you get to determine the use in your right of way.
And this is something that obviously isn't permanent. I mean, it's revocable. I know that I'm going to be held to, and we are going to be held to a standard to make sure that this is, you know, doesn't cause a problem, you know, is monitored accordingly. I mean, I'm confident that the tenants and myself will make sure that it's, it's, there's no furniture out there, there's not, there's not to be a problem. And certainly, you know, with it going onto the city right away, we've, part of the application was to submit insurance should something happen there, and, you know, we obviously have done that as well, so.
I, too, really appreciate the effort that you went into. I don't know how old this upper photo is, but I...
Seventy-eight.
It's mid-'70s or something like that. And when I look at that particular image of the building, before it had the Blue Gator, Swindlefish, the whole list of places that...
You're going back before my time now.
Reader.
Right, where it was this building that was added on to the existing building, and how you're bringing it back to what it once was. To me, it's also aesthetically pleasing and fits with the Zarni Plan of what it should look like when you look around the city of Athens, not just the city of Athens, you look around Athens County, you see a lot of towns and villages that have balconies like this, which fits with, with the period, fits with the flavor of what is southeastern Ohio. So therefore, I, and I appreciate the fact that you also understand that it is a revocable license if it goes through, to where it could be revoked.
Right.
And I'm glad to see that you've put some language in, or at least in the beginning stages of putting some language into your lease agreement, to where it becomes clear. One thing I would, would mention to you, you talk about a sun porch in here, and then you also talk about balconies, so I would, I'm assuming you're talking about the same thing?
Right. This was just our, our sort of standard lease addendum, and we, you know, we change it for each property.
Okay. So just that it's clear in terms of what you're telling someone, because they could, things, anyone could put something around.
Right, absolutely.
Thank you.
Other than furniture, what else might be put there or not? Other than furniture, what else might be put there or not?
Well, ideally, I would like nothing on there. So I guess I'll make that-
Well, if we go to, say, the trellis with-
I mean, from the tenants.
The vines, but suppose someone has a potted plant or a tomato or something?
Right.
Are you going to say, no, you can grow your own organic tomato on, on the balcony?
I think, I think in fairness for everyone, I think I'd like to probably just keep it empty when it's not being used, just from-
See, a tomato plant's not furniture.
No, I know, yes.
And you have a lot of good lawyers-
That's right, yes.
And students who will find that way to weasel around it.
You're right. I think I should probably put any, any item to be more specific. That's a good point.
Yeah. No automobiles, no, no anything.
No tents.
No tents.
No tents.
And that's true, because if you're not specific, they, they-
No, if you are specific, you've opened yourself up for some way to get around it.
Good point.
If you just, general ban.
Good point, very good, yes. Yes, stay back.
Yeah.
Michelle? So, I'm, I'm impressed again with all the work you guys did with putting the effort into showing the former, the historical aspects and all of that. The third ward is downtown, uptown. This is downtown from uptown.
Yeah.
And I have no problem with this, as it, as it's, as it's stated. Paula?
Taking out of the revocable license review that was done by city staff, if you remove the conceptual comments from both code and the city planner, I would request that at a minimum that you do indeed, if you issue this, comply with the fire department, who stated no more than 25 people, and with the chief of police's statement about the lease restrictions concerning the access to the balcony.
Paula, can you clarify access? What did you mean by?
When you began this, I heard that you were, would limit certain weekends?
I don't, I don't think I said certain weekends, I said-
Limit the number on certain weekends?
Yeah, the number on certain weekends is in the, in the form here that, the lease addendum, and certainly will do that, but-
But you would have a maximum occupancy that they would have to all the time?
Yeah, that, and I have no problem with that. I mean, what, the only folks that would have access to this balcony are two four-bedroom apartments. So, I mean, we're talking eight people and, and their guests. So, I don't anticipate, it's not a common sun porch, or patio, or whatever it is. I mean, it's just, it's just two apartments, eight, eight tenants, and I, I really don't anticipate any problems whatsoever. And certainly, if there are problems, then I will knock on their door at eight in the morning and make sure that there aren't any problems in the future.
Or we'll just call you at night.
You call me for whatever you'd like, well, I'll be there.
So I, we've all been in buildings where it says so many people in a certain area.
Right.
So I guess if the fire chief says no more than 25-
I have no problem putting nine in my lease.
You can make it 16, you can do whatever you want.
No more than 25?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to mention. I wanted to mention that if you're talking about eight tenants in two four-bedroom units up there that are the only ones who technically have access to that, you're talking about have them bringing, you know, 17 friends on there with them.
Right. And I think, you know, if you open the door and you look, I mean, it, it's going to be hard to fit any more than 25 people in there anyhow, it really is. I, I don't see the enjoyment, and maybe there is enjoyment, but it, I mean, you would literally be like-
But you're also sober.
Yeah.
You're sober.
Something else that might drive this, and may have also driven where the fire chief has come up with that number, is probably through the Ohio Revised Code. I'm sure that Ohio Revised Code may speak to building requirements for square footage and occupancy of square footage. I know it does for, for rooms. I would imagine there's probably a caveat in there dealing with balconies as well.
And I have no problem putting in the lease addendum 25 people. I mean, frankly, this is more about aesthetics to me than, than anything. I just think it will look more like it should be there. If it was actually big enough to be functional, then, you know, 18 inches is so close to the building that I would hate to, you know, do all of that, what we're doing, and then it looked like you have a gate up to, to the door, and so.
What about grills?
Nothing, definitely not grills. But, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tighten that, that was something I scribbled in there at the very end when I was putting it in here today, just to bring it in, but, yeah, that's-
Organic potatoes. And the height of the railing is probably a little higher than you normally would-
The height of the railing is whatever the-
I see, you're, you're dealing with the Ohio building-
Yeah, whatever state of Ohio is going to-
Is acceptable there.
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine it's going to be, you know, every bit of, you know, three and a half feet, or-
What is it, Bart?
Forty-four.
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 Three and a half feet. I also know.
I'm sorry, something just popped in my head with the grills and all these other things. Does your, will this unit or all these units allow pets as well?
Uh, no, we don't allow pets.
Wander out on them?
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't want a cat jump on?
No chickens.
Chicken. Sorry, sorry.
Okay.
So if I'm understanding correctly, then the fire chief is recommending a maximum number of people will be able to-
I thought, I thought you had the revocable license review.
So you got the revocable license.
He says, one person for five square foot, I'm sure he's quoting code there.
Didn't see the backside.
Maybe what we need is some kind of, you know, how they have-
Sure.
A requirement put on, you know, maybe in entrances to the balcony, something about-
Yeah, put it right by the door there.
Yeah, I mean, because more, the more warning people have, the better, because sometimes you have friends over who are for the weekend, and they're house-sitting, and they just don't know, so, so.
And I'm confident that the tenants that we've assigned these leases to are not going, you know, it's a brand-new place. We tried to not have destructive tenants, and I'm confident that the tenants that we have are going to live appropriately.
I think most of us would care about big weekends, you know, Halloween, that's, it's a hard weekend to be able to-
Absolutely.
Paul's favorite weekend, to, to control your friends. I mean, even if you know who's over and stuff, you know, you're running around saying, no, you can't do that.
I understand.
Don't fall off the balcony.
And don't fall off, and you can't lean over the balcony. It's not like the Kissing Stone in Ireland. So, I think that, that these are just kind of cautions that we would like to see on all the balconies. I mean, that's one reason why OU changed the, the thing for the homecoming parade, was the balconies were really scary for a lot of people who were in the parade, and besides just people on the streets. So, you know, I think that not being over, trying to be overly nanny or anything, just trying to cover all the basics. So, so I, if these certain things that have been brought up are written into the ordinance, I see bringing this up for first reading on Monday.
Yeah, it sounds good. I just encourage Brian to maybe have, have a farmer, a farmer addendum-
Yeah.
To show us before we, when we vote.
I'll bring it back.
So, there will be three readings on this.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming by.
Have a good evening.
Okay, my second agenda item for planning development is, I would like to bring forth a program element, a ordinance to establish a program in Athens, the city of Athens, to establish monitoring, restitution and restoration monitoring program for the city based on fees that are derived from any drilling operation, production of oil or gas wells, or disposal of wastes, or wastewater from drilling, or other hazardous products, products. As you know, the city of Athens has been trying to do certain things to make sure that the health and safety for the citizens of Athens is protected through this, the excitement of all this oil and drilling that is, may come down to our area of the state. What I see right now happening from the state level, and definitely from the state government right now, is that the city and the county is going to be at a loss if there is some kind of hazardous event, an oil spill, a gas spill, hazardous waste spilling, or leaking through the processes that are going on when you do oil and gas extraction, or injection wells. So what I see is happening, especially from what the, the state has indicated, from the Kasich administration, is that they're not really interested in making sure that the communities that are responsible to their citizens for health and safety, and the health of their water and of their air, receive the resources in order to protect the health and, of the water and air. And so the purpose of this monitoring fee would be to ensure that those resources are protected. Not only would this cover monitoring of water, and that includes baseline monitoring of not only our wellhead, but also of other well and surface waters within the city, but it would also look at other impacts that the gas and oil industry processes may have on the city, such as increases in our insurance liability, increases in road maintenance, the training of our firefighters and other responders, first responders for hazardous waste spills and accidents, any type of equipment that may be required for those first responders and other people in the city, and air monitoring for air pollution standards within the city. So what this basically does is establish a fee permit system within the city that would be, the purpose of the fee permit, the fee that would be required from each individual gas extractor or injection well operator would be put into a special fund, not the general fund, but a special fund for monitoring restoration, restoration and restitution, environmental restitution for the city. And that would also have to require different ordinance to establish that fund. So this is the first step of a multi-step process. And I will, I know that, that we've been talking about certain things, such as the severance tax, and this is our, our next step of trying to cover our citizens so that our taxes and our water fees are not paid for, are not paying to cover monitoring that should be done by the industry, or restitution that should be done by the industry, or cleaning up, or increases in taxes, or increases in insurance, that are kind of the result of this industrialization of this, the city. I provide you with kind of an outline, it's not an ordinance form. And part of this came from the city of Oregon in Ohio. They were, a hazardous waste disposal facility was cited within their jurisdiction. Hazardous waste disposal facilities are very much like permitting for oil and gas extraction. It's completely done, very similar, by the state. The state has all control over permitting, location, and of all those sort of things. But they said, you know, there are going to be all these impacts on our, on our coffers. So they said that we're going to have, put an impact fee, basically, on the hazardous waste that's being put in the facility. And the state took them to court, went through the Supreme Court, there is a Supreme Court case on this particular thing, and it was found that they were in their right to have a mitigation monitoring fee put upon, upon them. So, this is, is from a lot of their language that was put into their ordinance, and so I have presented some languages that can be put into an ordinance and open it up for discussion. I see this being discussed at least two times in, in committee. Questions?
Is this, this will be effective then for, only within the city limits? So nothing beyond?
At this point, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my hope is that it would be nice if the county did this today. You know, they, they do have certain jurisdictional opportunities to be able to do this, and that would be even more powerful, because they have, if you put in a monitoring program that can help private landowners do baseline water monitoring before, you know, drilling comes in, then they can be protected even more. And that's something, right now, if you want to do water monitoring, and do a baseline of your water, of your well, it's, costs you money. It costs the landowner money, who may not even be, you know, leasing their land, their neighbor up the way may be leasing their lands, that's a cost. It's a cost, and quite frankly, I think that as it stands now, people say it's going to be such an economic boom, the city is not going to get a lot of economic input from this. We have an income tax, unless a lot of people come into the city to live, which I don't really see, because our rents are already so high, and housing's so tight, that they're not going to move into the city. Our sale, we don't have a sales tax, you know, we're going to have all this impact without really a lot of economic input. And right now, with the severance tax, even if it gets increased to not the second lowest in the United States, but maybe a little bit higher, Kasich wants to do an income tax reduction for that. So that won't even go to the communities that are being impacted by oil and gas drilling. So.
I have just a follow-up question. It has to do with the periodic review of the permit fee amount, where you have December 31st of 2012 is-
Right, well, this was-
Okay.
Yeah, this is a-
So it's not a retroactive thing where we're going?
No. And the idea behind a periodic review is that there'll be a cap, so if some company comes in and has four, four, or five, or whatever we decide upon sites, that there'll be a cap on the number, the, the cost for them. Because each individual drilling site, there's kind of a, when you get more drilling sites, the cost of monitoring doesn't go down, but some of the cost of training might go down for each site. So to, to make it legal and fair, then that's the periodic, the once-a-year review of costs.
I think another point to add to all this is that, in terms of monitoring, if we can think of our, our communities, city of Athens, county of Athens, whatever we're looking at, as health districts, and apparently through Ohio Revised Code, through our public county health, city-county health departments, they have health districts. And there's ways that language and, and ordinances can be crafted to deal with what we know are some of the impacts of this type of industrialized development in a rural area. So that's another area where we need to continue to look at, is our health. If you can think of it in your, as your health district, that we may be able to also have additional ways to monitor and protect our citizens. And I think that's what all of us here on City Council, we're here to protect our citizens in a, in a reasonable way, in a way that-
In the best way that we can.
So this is, like, like Chris said, this is something that was done in the city of Oregon. And they were looking at a, you know, a very toxic kind of waste disposal site. And we know from all our research and history, and what we've known, what we learn every day, is that we're talking about health and safety issues. There are some additional things going on, if anybody's following what's happening in Kent, Ohio, they're also looking at issues re- Kent, Ohio, they're also looking at issues related to toxic substances coming actually through their city proper. We may look at some additional issues related to that, banning that type of, whatever the substance is, coming through our city, kind of like Columbus stuffs. They say, no, you have to go around the city. You know, there's different ways that you can manage hazardous waste.
You know, I need to read through this more thoroughly. I like this document a lot. And one of the things that I would like to at least mention, and we're early in this process, but one of the things I would really like to see would be to see our neighboring cities and towns north up and down the Hocking Valley, because everything runs south and our water goes from township, under township, by township, and ultimately comes here, and then we go further on south to everyone else. And to have other cities onboard with this plan or plans similar to this, I think that would create the health district, as being mentioned.
Right. Well, I'm hoping that, you know, cities all over Athens are, the cities all over Ohio are dealing with this limitations that the state has given in very creative ways. And, you know, Cleveland's doing something, Mansfield's doing something, Cincinnati, and so this will add to the toolbox. And if we can find ways to, I think ultimately what it comes down to is the protection of the health and safety of the citizens, and make it so that the industry that is gaining so much profit, I mean, it's once again privatizing profit and making public all the costs. And this is just putting, saying, hey, you're doing a lot of business, you need to make sure that you're covering the hazards of the business, and to ensure that if something happens, I mean, we all know about the little orphaned, you know, sites that are all over, all the orphan sites for drilling and mining around here, and we don't want that. And we don't want to rely on the state because the state has been unreliable. And they're going to continue being unreliable from every indication of what they want to do with an increased severance tax. I have, the state will not help the entities, the municipalities, the counties that are dealing with the actual drilling. They're going to pass all the, you know, severance tax all over the state so people get, you know, $35 off in income tax, but it's not going to help us, it's just going to make it more costly for us. So, any other?
Yeah. Thank you for putting your effort into this. As you say, the state regulations are often inadequate, and I think in this case, they've been very far off the mark of where they need to be. We know that they're often influenced by the industries that they're supposed to regulate and monitor, if not written by people that are in or happen in these industries. And so it's the fox watching the hen house in many ways, and I think that that's no way for our community to protect itself. So I see this as a very powerful way that we can have some local control over what happens in our community to protect the health and welfare of our city. So, thank you, and I look forward to seeing a few of the holes filled in here in a more final version.
Other concerns?
Just that the mayor and I were discussing whether or not this is an opportunity to put in where permitted. For example, we've already taken the legislative action, we're outside the wellhead protection, and the zones was another discussion.
Yeah, I have to work on the legislative language, my friend here, and also work with the auditor to look at, because there are O R C requirements for these types of fees to be very closely related to the cost of programs. And however, I see that this, doing intensive water monitoring, not only for the city, I know that we do some wellhead water, but this would expand it. I mean, this, and also allow for maybe application for private individuals to have water and surface monitoring. So that may be requiring, you know, a half-time employee, but that would be funded. This would, the whole idea that this would be cost-neutral ultimately to the city, so.
Just a point about the cost of the programs, and it makes sense that whatever funds would come into this would be used solely for that purpose in the city. Many people might not know this, but I've been told that were the, if the water supply for the City of Athens were contaminated and we couldn't use it anymore, our next closest supply would be piping water in from the Ohio River.
And how expensive would that be?
So there are very high costs associated with potential catastrophic pollution or catastrophic spills that would have such a huge impact on the city.
Other questions? So I see this as the first step in a bit of a conversation. I will look at the comments that we've gotten this evening, and I will, I'm getting together with Kathy and with Pat Lang to look at this. I think that this is, I would love to have this as a model for a lot of other areas and to, I know so many places have struggled with the fact that the state has really tied our hands, and so I will go forward with continuing to refine this, now that I've heard from council.
Thank you.
I do have a miscellaneous, oh, I have a chip.
You skipped the whole thing.
I have a chip. Chip Plan, please. CHIP is our Community Housing Improvement Program, and I bet there's a grant due on March 1st, is that right?
April 5th.
April 5th, okay.
Plenty of time.
Plenty of time.
Not really.
Great, thank you.
My name is Greg Andrews, I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development with Hocking Athens Area Community Action Agency, and we're here to talk a little bit about the CHIP program, Community Housing Improvement Program. The application process is open, cities eligible to apply this year. Probably the most prominent change from previous programs, we have, city has a current program open right now in the last few months or so of that program, and that program is funded at $500,000, but with the anticipation, loss of revenue, that cap has been reduced to I want to talk a little bit about the intent of the CHIP program. It's, the primary purpose of the CHIP program is to preserve existing housing stock in the community. There are a variety of activities available that the city can apply for, but there's a pretty extensive planning process that's in place, mandated through the Department of Office of Community Development. And based on the recommendation of that planning process or the participants in that process, we will bring together recommendations to the city for the activities that you can apply for. You have the option to not follow the recommendations of that committee, but you would want to have a pretty good, you know, reasons not to do that. Do you want me to go over the activities?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay. The primary and secondary activities, the current CHIP has, right now, the current CHIP program, there are, we did private owner rehabilitation, we did eight of those, or process, I'm sorry, three of those. We did a rental rehab activity, and in the city, we participated with the Local Metropolitan Housing Authority, and that's an option to partner with nonprofits. And there were 13 home repair slots available. And in fact, I will point out that there are still a few home repair slots available, so we'll be doing a little more active marketing for those slots. But the home repair activity is for one to two repairs, income eligibility, of course, for homeowners. Income eligibility is required. For one person, it's a neighborhood of $30,000. I think a family of fours, the mid $40,000 range. The private owner home repair program is about $36,000 cap, and the, a variety of repairs can be made through that activity. You can find the activities that are available. Ones that I had mentioned, of course, private owner rehab, rental rehab, homeowners activity, and that's something that has been recommended previously from previous planning groups. We've, I think the city's kind of steered away from that just because of the economic conditions, but, you know, if it's recommended again this year, maybe something that you want to consider, but it's just that, to assist a client to purchase a home and then offer rehabilitation services. The Athens market, I think, is, of course, a little different than most, but I do think we could make it work, if it's recommended. Home repair, new home construction, we typically partnered with Habitat in new home construction, as you're aware, and that's not only a good thing, it helps meet the match requirement. There's about a $60,000 match requirement for maximum grant, and so their participation is important if we can do that. There is a homelessness prevention, although this, and a tenant-based rental assistance, those are both activities, but I think that we try to promote the intent of this program, and that's to preserve existing housing stock as opposed to homeless prevention, because the department, or the, the state has programs in place to deal with those. And the resources for, to preserve housing stock are pretty limited, so. There's some secondary activities or supportive activities that go hand-in-hand with the primary activities, and I won't go into those necessarily. That's it. Paula, do you have any questions or comments, or council?
Some members have questions?
Last, it's usually an 18-month grant cycle. We've gone through, as you say, $500,000, we got this last rollover on it. The problems, of course, with home assistance, home ownership assistance, which is down payment, of course, is the public requires low to moderate income versus the housing prices in the city versus the mortgage payment rates that you can find. We usually put one or two of those in the mix, just in case, and I think we've had success with that.
We have.
The rental rehabilitation, which Metropolitan Housing was pretty successful because they, as an organization, it allowed them to go back and re-up their stock at that point. Again, homeowner repair and rehabilitation are the two main ones that work, but there's a limit to how much you can put into that. Really what council has to do is authorize us to put an application in again. And I think there's a series of public hearings I have to put in place, if my memory is correct. And again, this is to improve our housing stock and our, you know, homeownership in general. I think that covers everything I could think of right now.
Just one important point is that the projects are awarded based on previous performance, or there's a variety of scoring, and a scoring tool, but the performance in the previous program, so if you don't, if you lay out some outcomes and you don't meet those outcomes, it's very detrimental to future applications. So that's why that's critical.
So marketing is important.
Sure.
The ability to actually fill all those desires, all the plans that you put in place. Historically, I think many years ago, the city did a blanket shotgun approach to everything, and their performance was poor, and therefore we didn't get this, this wasn't even in a window of real application many years ago. It was before, I think, Rick Abel's time, before mine certainly, but I'm aware of the fact that you have to be, you know, you have to be realistic in what your goals can be done, what can be met. And I think we've done a good job so far on this. But this is the second, we didn't apply for the previous cycle, but the cycle before then, so we've been trying to catch almost every other cycle, but it'd be nice to be able to march it forward another time.
So I expect bringing this up for first reading on Monday also, and then we'll schedule the public hearing for another Monday, the committee meeting. And since it's not until April, we won't have to probably suspend or anything.
It'll be close.
It will be close.
Maybe emergency clause.
Emergency clause.
Just in case.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
I have one miscellaneous. Several weeks ago, we brought historic ordinance about historic preservation and establishing a commission with that. Paul Loeb.
I was just excited.
Paul Loeb brought and gave us a presentation. It's been in Pat Lang's office, he has been looking at sections of it, he will give us some updates and rewrites for that, and I expect that to be done by Monday, so I will bring that forward for the first reading on Monday also. And what were you so excited about?
Just the historic coming.
Yeah. Historic preservation.
Excited about.
Good. That will be, so, Pat has it on his upcoming list, so that should be done, presented by Monday, so. And that's all I have for miscellaneous. Do you guys have anything?
Just to let you guys know, there will be a series of public hearings, I think you got one of these, I sent it an email to you.
Right.
This has to do with the feasibility of our materials recovery system facility. There's going to be two meetings, one in Hocking County in Logan, January 30th, that's what, two days from now, I guess, and the other one's February 4th, which would be a Monday where we are, so that'll be at the community center. And again, it's for a review, I think it's just before they'll formally draft a report.
Could you put those on the website, please?
We can do that.
Thank you.
No problem.
Normally, committee meetings are not for public, that's when council, so, if you'd like to be put on the agenda, contact Debbie, and she will help you. So, not to cut you off, but that's the, how we run things here, so. Any miscellaneous from council members?
Okay.
My committee is now.
Moving along to the Finance and Health Committee, a member, nicely.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three items tonight, and they have to do with prior year bills and some staffing, and then the third item is appropriations. For prior year bills, we've been notified that for the property that the city now has at 83 Columbus Road, and this is where we were removing the tanks, we did, when they were removing the tanks, encountered some soils, some additional soils that needed to be removed. And these were mainly along the trenches that contained the supply lines. Because of that reason, the additional soils removed, we needed to purchase additional dirt to fill in the trenches. And the amount of that is $18,000, so that's what we've encountered. And if we have any additional questions, they got, we received the bill from Chemron, and this is what's owed. We do expect a final report from our Public Works Director, reported that we should be getting a report from Chemron this week, and that should allow for the final Buster closure on this property.
So this is what we see as the worst, that they didn't find anything else, and that's just.
Well, we're waiting for that final report. The preliminary data did not reflect anything that would be above the acceptable levels, but.
It was the supply lines, okay.
And it may very well be that the auditor will want some sort of retroactive, she's not available this evening, so we don't know.
As well as appropriating them, we might need to authorize, so we'll check with the auditor this week.
And it's a, so last year's bill had to make it on the fly, in terms of that decision, it's let's remove this properly and send it to the landfill and pay for that cost, but we do have a bill that's owed, so.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is staffing, and there's a request from the city to remove a part-time landscaper and place instead then two seasonal maintenance workers under lands and buildings.
I actually, it was an error, it was never to remove the part-time landscaper, it was to bring back the two seasonal maintenance staff positions that had been in the staffing ordinance and essentially inadvertently were removed when we did the new staffing ordinance for 2013. So they're seasonal, they can only work up to 120 days, and their goal will be to do a greater job with the landscaping around the city and the beautification efforts.
Okay, so it's only then the two seasonal maintenance workers under lands and buildings?
Apologize for that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Under appropriations, we have two items, and one of these would be a message that we received from the deputy auditor about funding for our internal services. And these are services that are provided. And these are services that are provided, maintenance for vehicles for the city and also for computer equipment. And what happens is that the different departments within the city are, in effect, build or share a portion of the costs. So what we need to do is increase the appropriations from other funds for support of the department budget by approximately $60,000. And this would be for the different departments, maintenance of the vehicles and the percentage or the amount charged to that department then is based on the number of cars for the particular, for the maintenance for those. And then for the portion of the technical salary, it's based on the number of computers that they have. So the different funds that will be charged would be the general fund. And then also are the street fund, the recreation center, the community center, the water fund, and the garbage fund. So these are the different departments that use these services, and we need to bill them appropriately.
I'm sorry, you said $60,000 for vehicle maintenance, or that's vehicle maintenance and computer?
And computer.
Okay.
And computer equipment.
This is to increase the amount of money going into the Internal Services Fund by $60,000.
We have a, we'd like to make an inquiry, and we could check with the auditor's office later this week, about having those be an additional appropriation instead of taking out their standing operating funds that they're using now. Particularly EPW's feeling the sting.
Okay.
So we're actually going to undertake an, our own internal audit to try to get the actual computer inventory and the vehicle inventory and see if it's being distributed correctly in terms of, because it's just a different world. We have a lot more computers now.
Sure.
Than we probably even have vehicles.
So you'll be in communication then with the auditor's office about this? So that's the second item, this appropriation. And then also our previous one that we just discussed, whether we'll need authorization for the additional, the prior year's bill.
Again, if you look, I believe you got the inappropriate fund balance earlier. And if you were to compare it to the funds that they want to take money out of, it might be easy just to increase their funds and just move it in there rather than pull. Right now, they're looking at their budget. All the departments have been looking at their budget, saying, we have this much. And all of a sudden, the streets, for instance, will say, wow, I'm down $20,000 now. And, you know.
Okay, so just to, and so it's a way of looking at it bookkeeping-wise, it would actually increase the appropriation then?
Of each fund.
Of each fund.
And just dump it into Internal Services. And again, we'll figure out which one works best. We'll shoot it off.
So we'll have the update on that, on what's the preferred way, the suggested way to do that? Okay.
I have a question on that. Last year in our staffing ordinance, we increased the IT department from what was one and a half full-time to two full-time positions. And it was not known whether it would be filled or not at that time, or whether you would need that extra to move that halftime position to a full-time position. I'm wondering if that's happened, or if you anticipate that happening and increasing the costs even more later this year?
I do not know. The evaluation or the assessment that we're having for IT systems is still ongoing. We actually were paying for one and three-quarter time persons last year. And I do not know. But that's kind of why, and one of the questions I think that came from Andy's world was, you know, I would like to see how this is distributed per department and per division. He said it may very well be that he's supposed to support 56% based on, you know, what he has in terms of vehicle fleet plants and all the telemetry and what have you. But I guess the final answer is no, we have not hired a second full-time IT person at this time.
And is there any specific cause of the $60,000 increase? Or is it just a budgeting?
That's a good question. I don't know. I got the same email earlier today. So I don't know the actual give and take of it. I mean, it first came out, there was also a discussion about de-appropriating $160,000 out of the capital fund. And then all of a sudden, it turned around and said, no, that's okay. If I look at the total budget that's been in our system right now, the appropriation for all the internal service support is about $337,000. If I look at my, the ordinance 012512, the entire amount for internal revenue was $441. So I'm not sure where, there's a big difference there. And I'm not sure if that's because they, I put the appropriation in, they decide they need to fund some reserves. The certified resources aren't there, or where, how it's coming about. So that's what I need to find out as well. But I'm just giving you a heads up that obviously I think something needs to be adjusted.
Thank you.
And if you look at the, as I said, the inappropriate balance sheet that you just got today, that has, and the internal service is only about $11,000 in certified resources. So there's obviously something needs to be, you know.
Of course.
Yeah, put together. And we're just, I'm just going to say, this is the information I got early today from Ray.
So those are good questions, and we'll hopefully, we will have some more background information by the time we introduce the?
I certainly hope so.
The ordinance next week.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, this is just for my own edification. The way it's broken out by department is, say for technology, one department has 10 computers, another department has 20 computers. So the department with 20 computers gets billed more than the one with 10.
Yes.
Sort of, and it doesn't depend on what kind of computers 10, or one department has or the other one.
No, it doesn't. Actually, I'm not even sure. It may even include peripherals like printers and drivers. We look at this every couple of years, and it's, you know, things change all the time.
Right.
People buy computers, buy extra ones, get rid of old ones.
Right.
So therefore, that's where Andy Stone's coming in questioning, saying, are you sure these numbers are? Because as I say, you look at the, you look at the internal support for the streets department, and it runs about 30% of this entire internal service support. And he's saying, are you sure about that? Now, he has lots of vehicles, but you know, that's, so does the police department, so does the service department. So I don't know how it gets broken down. I know one time we actually discussed, I think for other administration, we were actually doing a number of transactions going through our offices in the general fund in terms of whether it's the auditors or the mayor's office or court. And we were starting to look at that in terms of internal services, but that doesn't give us a realistic picture either. So again, when you start saying, what kind of computers, the maintenance of them? Well, we have maintenance contracts with some things, leases on others.
I'm just wondering about with, say with computers, as if, like with my computer, when it breaks, it's kind of dead, okay? I get a new one. So there's not a whole lot of maintenance going on there.
Well, the maintenance we're talking about is any IT maintenance as well. Whether, part of the thing there is, we're talking about mechanics on the car side, but we're also talking when somebody calls up and says, I clicked on the wrong thing and I've got a virus in my system, or I've, you know, what do I do next?
I understand.
So the IT people can spend a lot of time.
So it's also software issues, system upkeep, networking. My IP packet has blown afuse, and I don't know what to do at this point. Call the guy, so.
And I would be, I would probably say this also, probably Roosevelt Tower comes out of this, right?
Oh, yes, it's our phones.
Our IT, our phone system as well that we have. So you could actually add a number of phones to that system as well.
Right.
The computers and the police cars. I mean, we could go on.
Laptops, notepads.
Cameras.
Never mind. Take care of it.
And again, this is why we wanted to bring a consultant, because this has snowballed over time.
Exactly.
And we've kept the same IT personnel levels about the same. We've been upping it a little bit with the three-quarter time. But what I've seen in all departments, and you probably see it as well, it starts out with 50 computers and an IT person. And you know, you blink, and you know, two years later, it's 150 computers.
Yes, I know.
And all the toys.
Right.
So, and everybody assumes that this person still will be able to do it all. So that's why we brought in a consultant, look at this. But again, this is, I don't know where the numbers have gotten in disarray here, except it sounds like we need more. And I thought I put enough in, but obviously I did not, my conversation was.
I just wish there's some way to better track what is really happening to what computer so that there'd be a better way to bill that person or that department, but.
Well, are you talking about the breakage, or are you talking about the scrambling of it?
I think he's talking about an I-Work system kind of thing that we've talked about.
Oh, you're, okay. You're talking about following, tracking the person's work?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay.
In order to assign that cost of those hours or what have you.
That is pretty, that is not monitored as well as we'd like.
I see.
Okay.
But we do have a consultant onboard now who's looking at the entire system, hopefully to answer these questions like Member Reisner is asking. Soon.
Yes, and we'll look forward to that update, too. Last item is just an update, really, tonight about the wastewater treatment plant. This is our large upgrade to the system, the first in many years. And as background information, you might remember that last year, we passed an ordinance that authorized the design and engineering of the project. And then later, or actually earlier in the year, we had authorized water rate increases. We're doing what's probably a fairly modest compared to some of the other cities in Ohio. It's a 3% increase each year over a period of five years. And we'll be evaluating that and looking at it in terms of our other costs to make sure that that is reasonable. But the next things that happen will be that over the next three months, we'll have a series of probably three things. It'll be moving through council to make the water treatment improvements possible. So we've had that engineering design phase last year. And then we will have the bid that will be opened tomorrow, or the bids, and then decisions made on that. And then the next ordinance that will be having come through is, will it actually be a resolution of tentative award of the person that's awarded the contract? And so that will be one resolution coming through. The next one will be an authorization and appropriation. And we'll be discussing this more at our committee meeting on February 11th. And one of the parts of this project that we're working through is that we will also be part of what's called a Water Resource Restoration Sponsor Program. And we will enter into, hopefully, enter into a sponsorship agreement. And if I understand this correctly, what's identified are different areas in the state of Ohio that are scheduled for improvements, reclamation of lands, things like that. And by partnering with them, we can actually get a credit, I believe, on our loan.
It's a lower interest rate.
So it'll be, it's in the form of a lower interest rate. Thank you, Paula. So that will be one item that we work towards is that Water Resource Restoration Sponsorship Agreement. And then we'll actually need to work through the loans. And the financing agency that that will be coming through is the Department of Environmental Finance Administration, DIFA. These all have acronyms that, I'll try and read out each time, just so we begin to know them a little bit better. And then the actual funding agency that I believe that we're going to be working with is the WPCLF, and is that Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. And they are the ones that offer us a better interest rate than the Ohio Water Development Authority that we have worked with previously for our other improvements. So there's more paperwork at the front end, but bigger savings for us long-term in terms of a lower interest rate. So those are the different agreements with different agencies that we'll be working through in the next, really, just in the next few months to get this started on its way. Additional information?
No, just that resolution, we will be asking for you to pass it Monday, if, you know, after the bids have been, in order to keep with this timeframe, in order to keep our loan in the right queues.
Because we have approximately two months to move all this legislation forward. So it is a quick turnaround. So thank you for letting us know that we'll need to have a one, or suspend it, I guess. It is a one reading resolution. Okay, thank you. And if there aren't any miscellaneous items?
Sometime around January 10th, I see you got an email from Claudia, the resource director. We're putting out another survey. Every few years, we put out a survey for wage scales with other cities. I guess she sent you an email, Finance Committee in particular, I shouldn't say everybody, but with the ideas, if there are any type of conditions or things you want to ask in that pay scale review or survey. We put it out to several cities, usually about 10 or 11 cities. I think the last list in 2004 was 14 cities, of which 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, it replied. We did get a, I think Maryview Pay Scale about two years ago, they did a survey, which we participated in. They gave us the information as a result. The reason why I mention it, because I think she was asking if any of the council members or finance personnel in particular wanted to actually have any type of information that you would like to target. The idea is to stay within the statute city range. Of course, the same size would be nice. So if you also have suggestions, I'll have her forward that information again, if you wish. I think she just put out a general request, and then I think a subsequent one, which she's just sent to us, too, was a spreadsheet of the previous questions and previous participants.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. We'll take a look at that. Share that with, share it with all the council members.
I can shoot it to the rest of council if need be.
That would be helpful.
Just, and again, part of the thing is that, you know, it's nice to do these things, but if there's something else we're looking in particular that we need to add. We don't want to make it too long, because the longer you make it, as you know, with surveys, the less response you get. But if we have something that you think is pertinent or important that we should be quizzing them on in terms of pay scale and levels of salaries, et cetera. And that's all I really have.
I think we're finished with finance.
That's it? Any other miscellaneous council members? No? Then we are done at 9:05.